This Charleston County Council meeting. I'd like to start this meeting off with a statement and several prayers. Could we all stand, please? Today, we are acutely aware of the continuing bloodshed and tragic events in Israel and the Gaza Strip. Events that have sadly led to the extensive loss of innocent lives, people, young and old, who simply wish to go about their lives, love and cherish their families and friends, and to coexist peacefully with those whom they disagree. Tonight, let us remember with a moment of respect and silence those whose lives have been lost, and let us pray for peace, for civility, civility and humanity. Thank you. We have Rabbi Refson of Shabbat Charleston with us to give us a prayer.
Almighty God, source of all comfort, source of all healing, source of all security and source of all safety, we beseech you in your abundant mercy to bestow your blessings upon all those who are gathered here today, blessings for all those who are in this great state and great city. Today, we also ask for prayers for our council members, civil servants, men and women of law enforcement, our sheriff, and for all those who reach beyond their own world. Because isn't it axiomatic in your sacred tradition that when one of your children reaches beyond the world of his or her own needs to help another person, to safeguard another person, to elevate another person's life, to bring comfort to another, this very act opens the doors to your bountiful blessings, and it's for these blessings that we pray tonight. Tonight, I ought to ask you to join me in prayer as we pray for the people of the state of Israel. The horrific images that reached our shores over this weekend will be forever seared into our memories. The sheer brutality, the sheer horrific images is something that we pray that our children will be able to forget. But today, we also ask that you, God, send strength and courage to the brave men and women of the Israeli Defense Forces so that they can eradicate this evil before it reaches our shores. And it's for these blessings that we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Councilmember Kibrovsky?
We'd like to add a few comments on that. As being Jewish, and I know this weekend, I have two one-year-old grandchildren, and they had a fever, and watching them throw up and fever how horrible it is to see a baby suffer like that. Imagine seeing your babies beheaded in front of your eyes, your wife raped in front of you, the children watching, the parents be killed in front of you, or their parents seeing, like I said, the babies beheaded, or your children killed. This was a lot of our people, every Jew in America is descended from Jews from Eastern Europe. That happened to us in the Ukraine, with the Kosacks, and then when the Russians took over the Polish-Lithuanian Commonwealth. And then, what the difference went there, when the pogroms came, and they took us out of our homes and did the very same thing that's happening now. The local police and government took the side of those who were raping and murdering. The difference is now in a Jewish homeland, there's a Jewish army to fight back and to protect and preserve them. And I thank God, I'm an American, in America, this can't happen. But remember what happened when we were attacked on Pearl Harbor. We followed it through to the end, and the horrible tragedy of having to drop the atomic bomb, but the war didn't end until that happened. When Nazi Germany did their onslaught to exterminate the Jews and subjugate the Slavs and kill the rest of, and subjugate the world, the Allies didn't stop till they raised Berlin. I ask everybody to keep in mind what the next step is. No civilized country or people could tolerate what happened to them. And also to remember that many people came here from McLeanville tonight and Allendale. The country of Israel is less distant from Charleston County from one end to the other. We have people here from Metishto, people here from McLeanville. The whole country is shorter than that. So, from top to bottom, when you think of, and the Jordan River in some places is like a stream, and at the shortest places, if they ever gave back Judea and Samaria, it's about three miles wide. There's not much room for margin. And I quote President Biden tonight, I think he said it well. There are moments in this life when pure, undeterred evil is unleashed on the world, and this is such a moment. We also have prayers for the lives that will be lost in Gaza and the inevitable retaliation, because no government could tolerate that, and they have to finish the job. And to think of the horror of children, and they took grandparents, paraded women naked through the streets and beaten, mutilated bodies. This is a civilization that, beyond any civilized country could tolerate. And there are places in Europe where the same people who did this, you cannot wear a yarmulke in Europe as a Jew, because you will be beat up and killed in Paris, and my cousins tell me that there, and also in England. Although it's not my custom, I customarily wear one. I'd like to wear one tonight in solidarity with the people in Israel and keep them in your prayers. And the people who are held hostage, as you can imagine, the fear and trembling and the inevitable result, as the terrorists say, that they will kill them and behead them. And they keep them in your prayers. Thank you.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Ms. Honeycutt, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My rabbi. It's Rabbi Yusuf. No, no, sir.
All right, next item, we have our public hearings. First one.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 6:30 PM regarding the Charleston County Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for HUD.
Is there anyone here to speak on this?
We have one person signed up, Anthony G. Bryant.
I come, I come every year for this. It's important in terms of the fact that people are paying over 30% of their income toward housing. And so, it's important that we look at the $32 million that the Attorney General gave and look at the causation of that problem, of families having to pay over 30% of their money in rent for the adverse effects that you talk about. You cannot have an adverse effect absent looking at the causations. Like, look at that cancer patient, not starting from the beginning to the end. And so, when, and talking about dissent on this issue with developers and others, it's a paraphrase from Joe Dawson about dissent. And Congress, when tended, when poor meritous suitors sometime intend to safeguard the members of the public against abuse of privilege by evil-minded persons, Brian Brison Interior, Brian Brison Department of Education, Grammy Riddle, these are, this is talking about public safety of people that dissent on issues of housing around the country, okay? About corrections and people coming out of jail, not being able to get an apartment, any marketable skill set, and going back to jail. Okay? So, this HUD department and this money is important in terms of safeguarding the public from evil-minded people who have no money. So, you cannot discount not having any money for crime. Okay? The Vows Against Women Act of 1994 by Biden, but black folk in inner cities of America are broke. Okay? So, how can, how can a man not take care of his family, not feel as if it's a part? So, therefore, I'm not justifying what goes on. What I'm saying is this, the causation of the problem needs to be addressed, not just the adverse effects that we talk about. I saw $32 million of the governor, the US Attorney talking about $32, but women, black women? That's $100 million.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Next one, financial incentives. Lidos.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the County Council of Charleston County to consider an ordinance authorizing the approval of Lidos Incorporated as a sponsor affiliate under the filo agreement between Charleston County and Sun Life Assurance Company of Canada.
Mr. Bryant? Nobody to speak on this one? Thank you. The third one, Parker's Ferry Overlay District Amendment.
Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding a request to amend the Parker's Ferry Overlay zoning district. And we have a presentation.
Good evening. As Kristen said, this is a request to amend Article 5.12, the Parker's Ferry Overlay zoning district, specifically the density, intensity and dimensional standards for the business service nodes and commercial properties within the overlay district to allow for buildings to exceed the maximum 5,000 square foot building size, subject to special exception approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The applicant specifically requests to amend Note Number Four in Table 5128 to add a statement that buildings may exceed the maximum square footage requirement if reviewed and approved in accordance with the special exception procedures of this ordinance, meaning that buildings would be subject to the 5,000 square foot maximum building size unless they requested and were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals to exceed that size. According to Section 365 of the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, special exceptions may be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals only if the BZA finds that the proposal is consistent with the recommendations contained in the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan and the character of the base zoning district purpose and intent, that the proposed development is compatible with existing uses in the vicinity and will not adversely affect the general welfare or character of the immediate community, that adequate provision is made for such items as setbacks and buffering, including fences and/or landscaping to protect adjacent properties from the possible adverse influence of the proposed usage, such as noise, vibration, dust, glare, odor, traffic congestion and similar factors, where applicable, will be developed in a way that will preserve and incorporate the important natural features, complies with all rules, regulations, laws and standards of this ordinance, the ZLDR, including but not limited to any use conditions, zoning district standards or site plan review requirements of the ordinance, and does not hinder or endanger vehicular traffic and pedestrian movement on adjacent roads. In granting a special exception, the Board of Zoning Appeals may attach to it certain conditions regarding the location, character or other features of the proposed building or structure, as the board may consider advisable to protect established property values in the surrounding area to promote the public health, safety or general welfare. Prior to the adoption of the Parker's Ferry Overlay zoning district in 2017, the properties that later became incorporated into the overlay were designated for the rural cultural community protection future land use in the Comprehensive Plan. The overlay district is the first example of the implementation of the future land use designation through zoning. The process to develop the overlay district included working closely with the community members and stakeholders who felt that residential density should remain low and new developments should respect existing land use patterns, which were largely rural with historically and culturally significant properties. However, they recognized the need for employment opportunities and wanted to allow business, but limit the scale and scope to remain consistent with existing development. As a part of the PFO planning effort, a supporting document entitled Parker's Ferry Community Plan was included as a supporting resource within the comp plan, which included the results of a community needs assessment and provided recommendations and strategies developed in coordination with the area residents to address issues identified by that survey. The PFO implements the Community Plan Strategy 2.1, which states, "Adopt amendments to the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, including but not limited to an overlay zoning district as applicable." The Parker's Ferry Overlay zoning district includes a residential area and business service nodes and commercial properties, the uses in each identified and determined by the community. Allowed uses within the residential area include single-family detached housing by right and some other low-intensity recreational civic and institutional uses allowed either conditionally or through the special exception process. The business service nodes and commercial properties allow for more intense office and commercial uses such as healthcare uses, animal services, administrative and professional offices and retail sales. Higher intensity uses such as gas stations and resource extraction require approval through the special exception process. Building sizes are limited to 5,000 square feet of gross floor area in the business service nodes and commercial properties. Since its creation, the PFO has been amended several times, including twice by this applicant, to change several properties along Savannah Highway from residential to commercial to allow for the expansion of an existing agricultural equipment business on TMS 1210000048. Properties within the business and service nodes and commercial properties are primarily located off arterial roads throughout the Parker's Ferry area, including Savannah Highway, Old Jacksonboro Road and Highway 174. All properties within the PFO that are not zoned business service node or commercial area are zoned for residential. Residential properties have a density of one dwelling unit per acre. Some uses allowed within the business service nodes and commercial properties include agricultural sales or services, medical office, food sales and retail sales. Other more intense uses such as gas stations can be allowed, can be allowed by special exception from the BZA. According to Section 336 of the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations, tax amendments to the ordinance may be approved with the conditions, or approved with conditions if the following approval criteria have been met. The applicant did provide responses to all approval criteria. Staff finds that the approval criteria have been met, and the proposed ZLDR tax amendment allows flexibility in building size to meet the needs of businesses within the business service nodes and commercial properties, but through the special exception process allows for public input on proposed projects that might exceed the 5,000 square foot maximum. For this reason, staff recommends approval. At the September 11th Planning Commission meeting, the applicant did state he was present but did not wish to speak unless there were questions, and there were no other speakers. No letters in support or opposition were received for this request prior to the Planning Commission meeting or prior to today's public hearing. And this request was noticed as required.
Thank you, Ms. Winn. Appreciate that. Are there any speakers?
We have seven people signed up to speak. The first person is Caroline Alfred, and then Reverend Glover.
Good evening to the council. We, in the community of Parker's Ferry, we are against the Parker's Ferry Overlay zoning. We know that if this passes, eventually, we'll be rezoned. As a taxpayer, a property owner, and I live in this area, we choose to live as we are in the residential or rural area. We have sacrificed and dedicated our earnings, our work, various jobs, to retire, to live in our communities as we wish. Most of us are third and fifth generation due to the settlement of our ancestors who were slaves. We would like for you to respect our decision as citizens of the United States of America, property owners, taxpayers, and we would like to continue to preserve our heritage and pass it on to our children. We want them to know the struggle we went through to own these properties and how hard it is to keep them. I would love to continue to sit on my porch, I am retired, drink a cup of coffee, listen to the birds singing instead of watching congestive traffic, listening to building noise all night, or better yet, watching our area get flooded by any means to come in and take our property. My question to you finally is, why is it the Willtown area plantation is not affected by this at all? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alfred.
Next is Reverend Glover, and then Aldalis Smalls.
Good evening, council. On behalf of the Willtown community, I ask that you would put this situation on hold. And that way, you could explain more to the community, that way the community get a better understanding of what you're trying to do and what they're telling you, that they don't want no development area. So, in other words, if there have not been too many letters that it went out, we used to get letters in the community, but there have not been none, because I haven't received any. So, in other words, you have to educate the people in the community before you do anything. We know that Mead Vasvake will have a development that's coming in the spring, in Spring Grove Road, so therefore, y'all need to deal with that situation instead of dealing with the community in which we lived in. In other words, we need help in the area, but we don't need that kind of help. You understand what I'm saying? So, in other words, we ask you to take this off the table, or table it for later, and then we'll address the issue as a whole, as a community, and then that way we can move forward with this. We not gonna sit back and let you just throw anything in our face, and then we gonna accept it. It's not gonna work that way. You know how it goes, because we have a voice. We are taxpayers, so we gonna do what we got to do. Okay? And also, like I say, I oppose the amendment to remove subdivision plaque application approvals from the Historic Preservation Commission per view and to place authority under the Planning Commission because of Section 629710 of South Carolina State Law. That's for the time of my presence.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Next, we have Aldalis Smalls, and then Willie Johnson.
Good afternoon. Good evening. At this time, I would please ask council to table this, because we didn't know about it, we didn't know about the first meeting, we didn't hear about anything, a meeting, and we've spent a lot of time putting this together, this business node in the community, and we would like to live in our community as growing community, but we don't want to overgrow. We want to push the people out for tax reason. So, the bigger the building we get in, we gonna end up pushing our people out. We have to get rid of our land, because we wouldn't be able to afford the taxes when our taxes goes up. So, we want to keep our community, but we want to grow. But I think we can grow in a way that we can all live together and enjoy the community together with businesses that comes in our community, and we have a sense of, and the things that comes in our community. We don't want to be left behind, we don't want to be pushed out, and we got kids that coming up in our community. We are beautifying our community each and every day. We are on the move, so we gonna ask council to deny this permit at this time, so when next time come around, we'll be able to come together. These businesses been around for a long time. We seen them as we pass up and down the road, they never come to us. We out there all the time, they never come to us to say anything about whatever they want to do or how they want to grow, or whatever the case would be. So, we want to be included in the, in the asking and the going too, so we don't want to be left behind or pushed out. So, we want to continue to raise our family in our community, but we want our community to grow. We just want it to outgrow us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls.
Willie Johnson, and then Julius Williams.
Would you please, I mean, inform the public that it's not on the agenda?
I, I am.
Okay.
I was, I was gonna let them all speak.
Okay. My apologies, sir.
This is, this is a public hearing on this matter. There is no vote on this tonight. And so, I just want to make sure y'all understand that, and if
We understand that.
If we need to talk some more about this, we need to talk some more about this. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Good afternoon.
May I make one address, please, sir? Briefly.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
I'll be glad to speak with y'all at the community center to further explain what's going on here and give y'all the information you need.
Okay. We'll appreciate that, but right now, I have a whole bunch of people here from the Parker's Ferry area. Y'all just stand. And they are here with us because we've been forced, things forced on us that we don't like, and we gonna speak on it. We didn't get a notice. I see in the paper where it says, "Forsenquaria," but everybody don't get it. We didn't get it, I didn't get it. And we have people here that been there from day one, born and raised in this community. So, like everyone else say, we don't want to be pushed out. We not gonna be pushed out. So, the thing is, we are taxpayer people. You need to let us know when these things are gonna occur, so we can get together and support our community. We have older people that don't want to live in the downtown area. I looked on the news, and I see the houses, conditions in the downtown. These people don't have any place to go. They were born and raised here. And like one lady just said, we got our children, our grandchildren, our great-grand. I mean, we were forced, forced in this, so we gonna stay in this. Okay? And we just want to let you, let them know, to table it, when we can reach our community and let the people know what's going on. A lot of people right now don't even know what's going on. I don't even know, and I live there. I'm out and about every day. So, we need to let them know what's going on, so we can come together as a community. Right now, we don't, we just here and there, and people coming in, forcing them out. The taxpayers, people can't even pay their taxes. But if you move downtown, you could fund the housing council, but, you know, people out in the community need funding also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Julius Williams, and then Nathan Smalls.
Good afternoon. It's apparent that you don't want to hear what the public has to say, because you only gave us two minutes to speak. But I got a few things to say right quick, like, and my first thing is, why is this sudden change from the, from the regulation that will set forth this 5,000 square feet? We know, we know it's about money, we know that. But we, as a black community, are being tired, we are tired of things being shoved down our throats. We had enough of it. We've been taken advantage of long enough. We gonna fight this time. Okay? My second thing is this, why was that first meeting kept a secret? No one in the community knew nothing about this, about the very first meeting. Whoever, which is another secret, the individual that requests this, this change in the ordinance, we don't know who this individual is, and we don't know what they want to build. Why would you allow someone to put something in our community that we know nothing about? And my final question is this, would you allow this in your community?
Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna reiterate what pretty much everyone has been up here saying. This Parker's Ferry initiative started in, I think, 2017. No one told us about it. No one. Five years later, you know, now we're just hearing about it, and now you want to have meetings at, you know, Willtown, Town Hall, blah, 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 community center, this and that. But the thing is this, we were here, we want to stay here, we weren't mostly rural, no, we were all rural, and we want to stay all rural. If it's gonna be businesses coming in our community, we want to own those businesses. I don't, I don't, I don't need nobody else coming in. And the Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan says that y'all, y'all aren't gonna build any schools, any technical colleges, any nothing down there. Yeah, you gonna work us at Walmart, work us at this gas station, but where, where am I gonna grow? I gonna grow? Where am I gonna grow? I want my own, I want my own land, I want to control my own land, do what I want with, with my own land that I have paid for, that my great-great-grandfather has paid for and gave to me, passed down to all of us, that's here. So, no, this, we, we are gonna fight this by any means necessary.
The last person is Adam Steen.
Neighbors, I'm Adam Steen from Adams Run. Grew up there, we are neighbors. I am really, really, really sorry to hear that notices weren't given in a good fashion, and I'm addressing you, counsel, you as well. The very short and skinny of it is, we want to build a little bit bigger building for the tractor dealership on our existing property, not a new business, not outside people, I grew up there, I grew up on that property. I invite any of you, please come by, I'm there Monday through Friday, come and talk to me. I'm happy to come to anybody's community center, whatever it may be, to talk about it, but there's no secret, we employ people from that community and just want to do the right thing by the community. There is a nice plan for a nice building, but it is not going to be a, anything different than what we do now, just a new building, a safer environment, and we can hire more people. That's, that's what we're after, there is no secret, there's no secret agenda, and I hate that it's come to this, but again, I'm, I'm from there, from Adams Run, so it's, it's not an outside community or not, or an outside entity coming in to do something new. Anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to, I'm gonna defer, I'm, I mean, I'm gonna change what we normally do, we don't usually talk about this, but I'm glad that y'all are all here tonight, we're hearing you. This overlay district was designed to help protect y'all. If some of y'all don't know about this, and we need to get y'all to know about it, Mr. Boykin, that's his district, he's, he's gonna be willing to come down and talk with y'all, we need to have more meetings. Mr. Evans, can you tell me roughly how many notices were sent out for all that? And this is what we normally do on every occasion, correct?
Yeah, in this case, 526 folks were notified of both the public hearing and the planning commission meeting, oh, sorry. 526 notifications went out on our interested parties list for the, um, uh, planning commission and for the public hearing.
Thank you, and was the, was there, was the public hearing well attended?
The planning commission meeting?
Yes, sir.
No, it wasn't, uh, we just, I think, when Emily went through, I think just Mr. Steen showed up and he didn't speak.
Well, we need to, we need to go back and try to get the community involved.
Yes.
This is just a public hearing tonight, there is no vote, no action for us to take on this. Well, the good action is that y'all came in and told us, told us what you think, and that's what we need to know. So thank y'all all for taking the time to come here and be part of getting your government right. So thank y'all all, I really appreciate that.
And we'll get with Mr. Boykin about a date, and we'll have staff out there as well.
Great, um, so we need to make sure that we get connected with y'all and y'all understand what's going on. Thank y'all very, very much. Let's see, Freedom of Information Act?
Wait, we have public comments?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do, public comments, I'm sorry. Forgot.
All right, we have 15 people signed up for public comments. The first person is Cynthia Gatherz, followed by Barbara Singleton and then Megan Singleton.
And would y'all state your address? We've gotten out of the habit of doing that, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Diane Gatherz, I live in the residence of 426 Society Road in McLennanville, South Carolina, in the unincorporated area. I am an elected official for the Charleston County School Board for District One, and my reason here this afternoon is about a library. Why McLennanville existing library is not an option for a rural area for our area? The reasons are because of size. The existing library located is very small, its capacity is only 20 people, which can accommodate the library at one time. It's only a 32 by 40 building size, which is 1,280 square feet. One table for public use, one restroom for staff and the public, no social distancing, no privacy without interruption. The streets are very narrow on which this library is on, and it is widest end is only 18 feet to its widest point. Some of the issues that the library, the existing library has faces a lack of funding, staffing issues, and professional development. Our rural librarian wears multiple hats and provide multiple services, very few library, rural libraries have enough staffing for the work that they need to be done, and this is a challenge. So as a staffer offering the police, we need a library in the area for our rural area. Why not have the existing McLennanville Middle School be acceptable for a state-of-the-art library for our area, in the McLennanville area? In 1921, the McLennanville Middle School was built as a public school for all ages. In 1974, it was closed for desegregation reasons. In 1988, it was renovated to serve the northern end of Charleston County, and in 1989, Hurricane Hugo came and dealt a powerful blow, which cost the county $4.4 million, again, to renovate the same building, and it's still a flood zone. 20 years later, McLennanville School opened again, and here we are. We place for our library, so please, we need a library in the Jenkins Hill area, thank you, state-of-the-art library, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Barbara Singleton, Megan Singleton.
I am Megan Singleton, I live at 609 Holloway Street, Somerville, South Carolina, but I will forever be a resident of 9368 Highway 17 North, McLennanville, South Carolina. I am here tonight to tell you a few reasons why this area needs a new library. The first one is access to information. Granting rural areas, rural citizens access to a wealth of information, educational resources, and high-speed internet, which many still do not have in this year 2023, will be a benefit. Secondly, we know that libraries offer classes and training for adults that can, can lead to economic empowerment. By offering resources for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and skill development, the library can boost economic opportunities for those that have to travel far to otherwise receive those types of support. Thirdly, a library enhances the overall quality of life by offering leisure reading, access to movies, music, and a place for relaxation. Most of these people have to travel 30 minutes just to get to something like that. And lastly, a library will be a place for community gathering. Libraries promote social cohesion by providing a space for community events, meetings, discussion, discussions, and essentially fostering a sense of togetherness in our rural community, which we already have, but it would be nice to have a place where we can do that together. My point is, this library will be more than just a library for the people of Allendale, McLennanville, and it is my hope that you consider this as an investment in the future citizens of Charleston County when considering a library in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Singleton, Mabel Green, George Freeman.
Reported in a news article dated September 21st, 2020, Charleston County School District purchased 107 acres for $3.5 million for property off Jenkins Hill Road to build a joint middle and high school for the Allendale McLennanville areas. It is at this procured property, Jenkins Hill Road, that we are petitioning support, your support, for a state-of-the-art library to be built there. That acreage is more than adequate to build a North County Regional Library to serve our students and communities. Just like Wando Library provide an educational hub for students and communities, the Allendale Library must provide likewise for us. Jenkins Hill Road is easily accessible from Highway 17, and that acreage can accommodate expansion and the building of other facilities that will strengthen learning, provide health and wellness through increased community engagement, and most importantly, decrease travel time for everyone in our area. And since Charleston County School District has already vetted the land through purchase, we are asking you, council members, to put on a 2024 ballot, a referendum for funding rural libraries, so all citizens, regardless of where their zip code is, may enjoy what citizens in my presence and Charleston enjoy of living life more abundantly.
Mabel Green, George Freeman, Sam Spence.
Correction, I'm Mayor Marion Green, not Mabel. I'm the mayor of Allendale, and I support this pledge for a library in the Allendale, McLennanville area. I think Allendale and McLennanville is the only rural area that don't have a library, so that's something that we need to think about. We always have to come and fight for what we want, and that's not good. So I know everyone on here except a few for us to sit down a round table and let's discuss this, because it is crucial that we have to just be the left-out people all the time, and we are tired of it, I'm tired of it, so let's, let's get together, we could work this out, this council, the community, and others, we could work it out. And I also support the settlement community that's here tonight as well. Like I said, we always have to fight, and I support the amendment that they are asking you to consider the subdivision plaque application. We are here, Allendale, McLennanville, y'all stand up. We support our neighbors, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Green.
George Freeman, Sam Spence, Filippo Raviolco.
Good evening, George Freeman, 1450 Bowman Road, President of the CAGE Organization. CAGE is a non-profit organization, and our main mission is to improve the quality of life in African-American settlement communities like the communities here tonight. I have came to speak on a different issue, but since we have people from these different communities here, I would like to say that the CAGE Organization also supports the library and also supports the community when it comes to the Historic Preservation Commission. Both will serve both communities very well, and I will end with that because I came here for another issue. Some time ago, the CAGE Organization wrote a letter to the, all council members, talking about a dangerous situation in Six Mile Community with a sidewalk. We received response back saying that the sidewalk can be built because of the cost and there was no money available to do it. Well, I'm here tonight to ask you to put in the budget right now, so that we can have the money with this sidewalk in the Six Mile Community before there's a fatal situation in the Six Mile Community. Councilman Kowalski walked it with me, and he knows how dangerous it is, because it's just a narrow strip on both sides of the road in this section. Now, it's only a small part in the county, but I believe you can work with the Town of Mont Pleasant to come with the money to build a four or five-foot-wide sidewalk in the Six Mile Community. We've had a problem with getting it built by the Town of Mont Pleasant because they want to put a multipath in the community, which would disrupt our community. We would like to enjoy a nice, quiet community just like everyone else, but a four-foot, a five-foot-wide sidewalk would make it safer for people to get around in the community and to access the new park that is coming near the community. I would hope that you would really take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Sam Spence, Filippo Ravalico, Diedrich Stalges.
Hello, counsel, I'm Sam Spence from the Preservation Society of Charleston at 147 King Street. Thanks all of you for your continued discussions about the proposed changes to the county's Historic Preservation Ordinance. Last week, you received from me and my colleagues at the Historic Charleston Foundation, I've got fresh copies for you here in a second, a memo drafted by Preservation Society President and CEO Brian Turner, who's an experienced preservation attorney, outlining the legal foundation for regulating land use and subdivisions through public bodies like the Historic Preservation Commission. In the memo, you'll read four points that argue the current proposal, argue that the current proposal to reduce the scope of the Historic Preservation Commission's authority is based on flawed reasoning. Fundamentally, the South Carolina Legal, South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act charges local planning commissions with the, quote, "power and duty" to prepare, quote, "regulations for the subdivision and develop, or development of land," and, quote, "to oversee the administration of the regulations." The law doesn't elaborate on how the administration should or could take place, just that the planning commission must oversee it. It could administer those regulations by delegating part of it to another body, like a Historic Preservation Commission, and how exactly that looks varies, it could be different, whether it's advisory or recommending or another method. You'll see three other points in the memo that go deeper on, into how and why the Historic Preservation Commission should retain an important role in the subdivision approval process. Even if you believe that this ordinance could use further clarification, state law gives counties, gives all of you, the authority to enact protections for invaluable cultural resources, and in unincorporated areas from Parker's Ferry to Ten Mile, the county is the only hope for those protections, there are no others to fall back on. So if you represent those communities or if any of this gives you pause, even if you believe the ordinance could use some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Filippo Ravalico, Diedrich Stalges, Adrian Kane.
I'm not asking the public any question, but I'd like to ask you and the administrator, my suggestion some time ago, are the two entities going to get together so they can speak, so I'll know, at least speak for myself, which way to go, because their lawyer's saying one thing, our lawyer's saying another thing, so it would not be prudent that we at least hear more from the community to say what's really going on, because this is quite disturbing, sir.
Actually, I believe they all have met. Mr. Evans?
We've met, we've met with representatives from the settlement communities and explained the changes. I don't know if the county attorney has spoken with, um, with the attorneys from, um, any of the preservation folks or not, but as far as communities go, we have spoken to the community reps about the changes.
Mr. Spence, did you have something you wanted to give us?
I just handed it.
Okay, oh, thank you, okay, great, thank you, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Can we get that now?
Yep, as soon as the next first goes on.
Okay, it'd be good for us to have.
Yep.
Thank you.
I wanted to say something quick to Mr. Freeman.
Chairman, point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry, nothing about you.
We're starting to get back into this, into this comment, commenting during public comment periods.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, counsel, same topic. I have some good news. It's not your job to pick the right interpretation, that's up to the courts. Your job tonight on first reading is to consider some major amendments to a very significant, uniquely significant ordinance in Charleston County. Now, the commission and the ordinance, they were created to fill a gap in the expertise, the skill set of the planning department, and yet, here we have staff going solo on a major rewrite of the ordinance, doubling with the definition of historic district, historic integrity, and where the removal of the subdivision, of which we've heard so much, is only one of the many ways in which a major rollback on the protections and the powers originally bestowed on the communities and the commission are taken away. So, all this drafting happened, as I said before, under the constant threat of litigation, and staff never reached out to ask for feedback or advice from the expert, from the communities, and not even from planning commission. In August, planning commission was not shown the 15 pages of proposed amendments that you are considering tonight, they just show them the small changes to the CLDR. So, three days later, that meeting in August, a certain developer dropped three lawsuits where the 15 pages are the exhibit one, and you can read sentences like where the 15 pages are the exhibit one, and you can read sentences like, "The county has already recognized that the purpose of the ordinance was invalid." Are they expecting you to rubber stamp whatever they cook up during a problematic subdivision application? Are they expecting us not to notice, you not to care? What kind of game is this? When we say that there's no conflicts of law, but only a conflict of [beep], we don't mean to belittle the importance of your task. Quite the contrary. You have the responsibility of following the law, all of the law, not cherry pick provision, following the comprehensive plan and working for the people of the county, not the special interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diedrich Stalges, Adrian Kane, Pearl Askew. Diedrich Stalges.
Renee and I own a property at 2948 Canyon Lane, which is located in Phillip Community. I'm here to give you my point of view from our experiences appearing before the Historical Preservation Commission. I first asked the zoning department if I could build our house at Barnamian and was sold, they were very similar, had just been approved from the HPC. While I was in the zoning office submitting my plans, I was informed that I would be, I would need a letter of approval from the HPC commission before I could submit to the zoning. When I went before the commission in April 19th of this year, I was denied. We went before the commission again on July 19th, and it was a tie. So we did not get approval at this meeting either. During our dealings with the board, we could find no clear statement of mission of the HPC. We had staff approval for the April meeting, but we were told to change our design to resubmit in order to qualify for the second meeting on July 19th. We believe there needs to be standards and set procedures and follow precedent. During the first meeting on the 19th, board members did not give us a reason why they were voting against us. During the July meeting, several of the members would refer to legal counsel to figure out why they were voting no. So after the vote, we were not, also, after the vote, we were not allowed to ask questions while we were denied. So there were, there needs to be a time and a period that the commission can ask questions to the property owners so they can get answers. We are in agreement that we should have some kind of overview of historical appropriateness. But we believe [beep].
I've got a lot more I could say. It needs help. It's a young commission. It needs help.
Thank you.
Adrian Kane, Pearl Askew, Craig Askew.
Good evening, council. Adrian Kane, 936 Casique Province, in Mount Pleasant. I'm also the CEO of the Charleston Home Builders Association. Thank you for your service and dedication to this issue and to your leadership in the county. I want to applaud council for your ongoing commitment to ensure that the historic settlement communities have a voice in the future of their communities. We all appreciate the intent behind the creation of the Historic Preservation Commission and recognize the need to continue to evolve how the commission and district functions. On behalf of the Charleston Home Builders and the more than 40,000 employees represented by this association, the voting trades throughout our region, we support the proposed amendment to the ordinance. Even the best of intentions can have unintended consequences, and we believe these changes have, these changes will address many of the immediate concerns. I encourage council to continue to work to ensure the intent of these districts and commission stay true to their purpose and not become a fundraising platform for special interest groups. We encourage the council to provide greater definition to the specific roles that should be represented on the commission. Charleston County often designates specific industries required for your boards and commissions. We encourage the council to add designated seats for an architect, a builder, a site planner. It is unfortunate the commission's been polluted by special interest groups and the narrative has been allowed to be an anti-growth instead of how we can uplift the economic mobility and prosperity of this community as we look forward to the future. Having this level of expertise will assist these communities as they navigate decisions about density, design, infrastructure. These decisions can and will have unintended consequences for these communities as it relates to property rights and property values. Thank you again to your staff, to the council, to the commission for the dedicated work that's gone into these changes. The home builder stands ready to assist these communities and communities throughout our county to build an economic mobility system that ensures we grow equally and prosper across, across our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Askew, Craig Askew, Ed Pinkney.
What does that mean, special groups?
Good evening, council. Thank you. Pearl Askew, 977 Gatsenville Road, Orondah, South Carolina. We are asking for a pause on this ordinance because we need to get more in depth about how this is going to and will affect the settlement community. This will not add value to the land, if you will, when the settlement residents are pushed out. We need more time. This has been a conversation for the past five months or so. We've heard about it within the past, what I would say, four to six weeks. We just need more time, more time, more time. We are not against development, but when development is pounced on black communities, settlement communities as it is, we need, we don't have the resources and the money as some of these other big firms to come back. We need more time to have the conversation on how we need to grow and develop our communities for the generations that came, that, that came behind us and for those who are coming to in the front of us. We are not against development, but this type of development will not preserve historical settlement communities. We need more time. I ask you, I plead to you, I beg you for more time to have a better conversation about the law and how it affects the African-American settlement communities and the fact that the state law can give the, the authority to the local councils to help better serve the African-American communities. Thank you.
Craig Askew, Ed Pinkney, Josh Dix.
I'm Craig Askew. I live at 987 Gatsenville Road. I see a similar pattern, pattern here this evening that's very disturbing. I see people from Parker's Ferry saying that they wanted a farm they didn't know. People in this area with similar settlement patterns as we have in Ten Mile. I see people here tonight that were, have real estate properties passed out from generation to generation. I see people here tonight that are really enthusiastic about their communities and really want better for themselves and their homes. And most of all, they want better for their economies. We talk a lot about business in these communities and how rising tides lift all boats. Mr. Kibrowski talked a lot about how we need to live and work together better. But these people, these black people from these settlement communities, it's a different settlement pattern. And here we are tonight, we're talking about taking out the subdivision rules from this policy. That's the wrong thing to do. These black people have direct lineage of slave. They had nothing. They were beaten, raped, and everything taken from them, from education to property, from their own self-worth and value. Can I deny that? And tonight, you guys sit here in judgment and you can take that all away. You must remember who we are and where we came from. We are the same, we are gullible Americans, but we're different. We came from a different side of the town, but we're trying to do better, to make better lives for everyone. You can't just continue to leave us out, take out subdivision pieces because we settled the property different. We had no choice. We had heirs' property thrown at us. We had no lawyers, no judges on our side. We had no police officers on our side.
Thank you, sir.
Ed Pinkney, Josh Dix, Justin, Justin Schwebler.
Hello, my name is Ed Pinkney. Live at 3768 Robbie Glover Road, Orondah, South Carolina. Before I start, I'd like everyone from the settlement community or who's here in support of the settlement community to please stand. Thank you all. So I would ask you to remain to, to not weaken the Historic Preservation Commission by removing the subdivision and plaits. One of the reasons we're here for frustration is that the settlement communities are constantly asking, what is next? Each time representative from your commission or government comes to us and says, do this one thing, this laborious process to protect the community, and we do it. Forty-one has become a part of the National Historic Places, but that's not enough. You tell us to become historic districts. That is not enough. You tell us to, to create area character appraisals that are 200 pages, we do that. That's not enough. And now you're telling us to create zoning overlays, which we're doing. And we have to wonder, is that going to finally be enough? Each time you meet an obligation you give us, you then come back to us and say, this is simply not enough. So we're asking you here tonight to postpone any amendments to the Historic Preservation Commission, tell the communities what we actually need to do, and let's do that before we take our protections away again. We think after the fourth time, we've earned that right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Josh Dix, Justin Schwebler, Desmond Howard.
Good evening, council. My name is Josh Dix. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Charleston Trident Association of Realtors, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the amendments for the Historic Preservation Commission. There's no denying the value of the HPC, but the planning commission is the body who's entrusted with the responsibility of approving plat approvals. This is consistent with all of our other jurisdictions and municipalities. It's consistent with state law. This is a necessary clarification and an appropriate interpretation that is being presented for you. We appreciate you all taking the time to address this irregularity. We're grateful to the county staff and the county leadership for catching this. CTA R supports the amendments to the HPC. Our mission at the association is to protect and support property rights, and these changes do exactly that. We are not in the business to infringe on anyone else's rights or property, and we support the initiative taken here tonight, and we thank you for the time and the support of these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Schwebler, and then last one is Desmond Howard.
Justin Schwebler, Historic Charleston Foundation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As you know, Historic Charleston Foundation and the Preservation Society have sent each of you, members of council, a joint memo outlining our position on this issue, and we appreciate if you've taken the time to consider the content of that letter. I won't repeat the technical nuances of the memo, but again, we just want to reiterate and stress our insistence on restarting this process of drafting amendments to the Historic Preservation Ordinance and the ZLDR in order to create an inclusive and transparent process that especially includes the input from the recognized communities that are directly impacted by the proposed amendments, and especially to find satisfactory alternative means of protecting these communities that are submitted concurrently with any proposed future amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Desmond Howard.
He can just call me. I think I'm next on the list.
We did have 16 people that signed up, and if he's not going to speak, if that's your.
Okay.
Ben Cunningham.
Please give us your name and address.
Thank you. It's Ben Cunningham. Me and my family live at 735 Waiters Drive on James Island in Charleston. I'm here as an attorney on behalf of the Ten Mile Neighborhood Association. Now, I'd like to address the council about the basis for these amendments. What's been told to you is that these amendments are necessary to bring the ZLDR and Historic Preservation Ordinance in compliance with 629-340. That was quoted in brief earlier, but basically what the provision at issue says is the planning commission is in charge of overseeing administration of subdivision regulations that this body approves. No problem. What that doesn't say is that the planning commission or staff can't pass a regulation or enforce a regulation that says in enforcing our subdivision regulations, we can look at other bodies to give approvals, which is, of course, what happens. The Supreme Court, the Court of Appeals of South Carolina have never said that that's illegal. Now, the ZLDR, in addition to the Historic Preservation Ordinance reference, which requires the certificate before subdivision plat approval, also requires DEAC permits, certificates of inspection, letters of coordination, and other approvals from state and local agencies. Now, commentary with the preliminary plat application section says not even an application can be complete unless the applicant has received all approvals from all other agencies as a prerequisite. So what is going on here is, just like there, you have to, in a historic district, get a certificate of historic appropriateness from the statutorily empowered body, the Historic Preservation Commission, which is empowered expressly to restrict or condition erection of buildings and [beep]. How did they ask you to do? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Darby.
I need to see policy whereby we can't ask questions during public comments time because I'm tired of these developers coming up here telling half truths and whole lies, and I can't question them, sir. So I need to have, I need to see policy that I can ask them questions.
Well, Mr. Darby, I made, I made sure that we scheduled the next, the next item right after public comments so that everybody would be able to stay and they wouldn't have to wait till the end, and council can discuss it. We can ask questions up here of ourselves, and we can discuss, we can discuss the item right here in front of everybody.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item, Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted, agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Thank you. Minutes of September 26th.
Second.
Move by Ms. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Moody. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Three A and B.
Move for committee recommendation, items three A and three B.
Second.
Object.
Move by Mr. Moody and seconded by Mr. Boykin. What kind of discussion do y'all want to have? You want to talk about this?
Yes. And I wanted to make a motion to defer. Is that?
Well, there's already another motion on the floor. Who, who wants to speak first?
Well, I just find it very ironic that the community itself, they've come before us to ask, just to put on pause, just to put on pause to give them more time, and yet we're ready to say, let us move on, even though there are three readings. The community themselves, they're just asking, as common citizens, they're asking their servant masters to please give us a little more time, and we're saying no. I just think that, I mean, where, where's the civility in that when our citizens come before us to ask us, and we're going to say no?
Any, Mr. Warman.
Yeah, I, I have a, along similar lines, I have a question as to these overlay districts. I mean, what, what is the timeline on getting that sort of thing in place? Because one of my concerns here is that it sounds like we've got multiple tools, or at least another tool to kind of put the protections in place that folks are looking for. And I'm a little bit worried about pulling the one and leaving it sort of open for some indeterminate period of time before we get something else in place. So, so where are we with this overlay district? Particularly, I believe, as it relates to Ten Mile.
Sure. We received a draft from some representatives from Ten Mile community on September 29th. We met earlier in the summer and had a Zoom call over the summer with them as, telling, asking them to provide us a draft that would be the fastest way for us to get it through. We received that the 29th, where our staff is reviewing that. There's a lot of information in it. We're meeting with the representatives of Ten Mile that have assumingly created the draft on the 19th of October. From there, we're going to fast-track it as fast as we can through the process. As you know, from an adoption process for an overlay district, it's, it's an ordinance, so there's three months of adoption itself. But we first need to, before we even enter that process, we need to first get the draft in a form that's acceptable, that staff will be administering, that we can administer, is also reviewed by the legal department.
Would a fair estimation be, I believe you said, y'all were thinking of, I'm sorry, I, I might have mistaken November for October. Would, would we be able to contemplate maybe a committee meeting on that in November at some point?
meeting on that in November at some point? I mean, does that sound feasible?
I don't think that's feasible. It needs to get in the draft process. We need to have one meeting out in the community, staff does, to make sure that we've fulfilled our duties as the staff, to make sure that everyone in the community is notified. All the properties will be posted. They'll go to Planning Commission for a recommendation first, and then on to council for the public hearing and for the three readings.
Okay.
And calling the public works.
And that's for the overlay district.
That's for the overlay district.
Which will provide protection.
Right. I mean, one option is to, that would be faster, is to rezone the Allendale Ten Mile community to S3, which is what the majority of the other communities are, because it's, what we're hearing is it's the, it's the R4 zoning, the density, that is one of the primary concerns.
Yep.
And the lot sizes, yes.
And a question off of that, just to be clear, we could do that as sort of a stopgap whereby, once the overlay was ready to go, the overlay would take over, and nobody would be S3 unless they particularly wanted to be through the overlay process.
Correct. That's correct. So it would, it would give an opportunity to slow down, if you will, take our time with the overlay. And in the meantime, the rezoning to S3 for the R4 portions of Ten Mile could be in place a lot sooner than the overlay district. Yes.
Mr. Warman, I'd support that.
Well, I'd certainly support it as well. Do, I mean, can we do that via motion tonight, or does that have to be done?
Can we amend the motion to defer it?
Mr. Evans, how do we do that, do the, what we just discussed?
To rezon, I think that county council has the authority to rezon any property in Charleston County. There is a process for that, though. So we would, we would like for council to instruct staff to go through the rezoning process. I will say, though, that in the meantime, I do think that, that the ordinance changes are important. As you know, we've spoken with the county legal department. There are some issues that needs to be done with that. But I think that, that the rezoning, if they want to get through the rezoning part, that would be fast, I guess.
Mr. Kowalski.
I just wanted to speak. I spoke at length last week, and I apologize again for my voice, so I hope I can be understood. This ordinance was in effect for five years, and in that five years, the state law has not changed one iota in any way, shape, or form. And I heard the speakers tonight, and not everything in life can be commoditized. Not everything's a commodity. On the one hand, you have people who spoke their heart and soul. This is their community. They've been here. It's an historic place in America. All the blood, sweat, and tear, that's great meaning. It can't be recreated. They can't take money and move somewhere else and recreate this. All over Charleston, we see every day losing what is special and unique about us, and we have a responsibility as county council. The city of Charleston has people to look over, commissions to look over the historic nature of Charleston. McLownville, the town has a town council. We're in that same situation with these areas and the unincorporated areas. We have a responsibility. We make this change, and what generations have suffered for, and what their ancestors have suffered for, will be gone. And anybody that drives out there, as I have thousands of times, this is the next frontier. You have Carolina Park, you have Park West, you have Dunes West. This is the next place for subdivisions. You do this change, you take away the right from the historic commissions, that's what's going to happen. Everybody knows that. And not everything in life is a commodity. The builders came and they say about, you can do the same thing in McLownville. You can turn it all into condos. People don't want that. You talk about the libraries. They love living in rural areas. Where are people going to take the money, whatever they can do to sell it, and recreate the sense of family and the pride of their ancestors and what they have preserved? And I think as council members, we need to do everything we can to preserve the dignity and humanity of the people that live there and what that represents for Charleston County. It's unique in America, and we should not give that away. You have here, there's different legal perspectives. I don't see that there's not ambiguity here. I read what, and I listened to what Attorney Cunningham said, and I looked at the arguments that the Preservation Society, and I think these are valid. It's not a slam dunk case. It's not clear. Nothing has changed in the five years, and the people that live there are not commodity to be bought and sold, and what they represent is not a right to be bought and sold. I don't see what the rush is on this. We have an opportunity to define it. There wasn't a rush in five years. Why should there be a rush now? And I beg it, I know there was only two of us, and our job is not to make room and push through communities, and we saw what happened in Peninsula Charleston and the gentrification. Those lives have not been recreated from where they live, and to the lives, maybe to the people who want to develop it, the lives don't seem like much to them, or they think that they can get money, and it's a matter of money. It's not a matter of money. You can't create the conditions of where people live and love where they live. It means something beyond the mere commodity value, and I think we owe them respect and dignity and preserve something that's special. I won't be a part of ending that. I ask us to either defer it or vote it down. We have a chance to do this. This will be our legacy. So I urge us to be cautious and do the right thing tonight, and not give in to development. And everybody knows, if we do this five or 10 years or 15 years, these communities that have struggled for generations to preserve, what their ancestors have given them, will no longer exist. And is that what we want to accomplish? I would hope not.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Sass. It's not on the agenda, but I, as chairman of Planning Public Works, if there's no objection, I would ask staff to consider bringing back that language that's been discussed here for our consideration, unless you.
The language being sort of the stopgap rezoning?
Yes, that S.
Overlay? Stopgap?
Yes. And let's debate it. Let's have it out here. These people, they heard it. It's been advertised, so they can come in here.
Yep. I, I, well, you weren't asking me, but yes.
I was asking if there was objection. It doesn't sound like there is, so let's have staff do that. Joel was looking for directions, so I think we just give him direction to go do it, or to bring it to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is that a deferral?
No.
Okay.
No, that was, that's a different item. So we just ask staff to look forward to doing the stopgap zoning.
Future, at a future Planning Public Works meeting.
And planning out there. So to, Joel, you understand what we're asking for, correct? I want to make sure you got, you got it. We're giving you the right instructions.
Yeah. I think that the instructions can come tonight to instruct staff to start the process for rezoning if council wants to vote on that. But, I mean, I don't know how that process, I don't want to get involved. But we, the process would be for us to post the properties and notify everyone that the parcels in R4 and Ten Mile would be rezoned to S3, and that we would take it on to Planning Commission and to this council.
Thank you, Joel. Ms. Honeycutt?
And again, we're slightly off subject from the actual discussion on the motion, but my only concern that I would put out is the folks in this community knew they had an opportunity to rezon, and they chose R4. So before we go imposing R4 on them or changing it to S3, I want to make sure there's plenty of community engagement and involvement because they understand the difference between rezoning and overlay, and they've chosen the overlay path. So I don't, I don't want to impose on anyone anything they don't want in our haste to try to do something quickly. I just want to make sure there's plenty of public engagement.
Sure. And I was just responding to any options that were available. That is an option that would be faster than an overlay district. That's the only other option I can think of, to address the main concern that we've been hearing from the Ten Mile community, which is the smaller lot sizes and the higher densities.
Thank you. Mr. Warman?
Well, I, I think if the procedure to do that is going to have to go through Planning Commission anyways, we've got a lot of folks here tonight. We've got, you know, obviously there's a lot of attention on this issue. I think we'll probably, I could well be thinking of, or not thinking of something that, you know, gets knocked off of course with that as sort of an appropriate, or as a way of trying to, you know, maintain sort of the status quo as much as we, you know, can. And if that's the case, then we'll, I think, hear about that through that public process, I would, I would hope. I guess maybe I am still a little unclear on the timelines here, because that would apparently be faster than the overlay, but it doesn't sound like it's going to be happening between now and, say, second reading of this ordinance.
Oh, no, not at all. No.
Okay.
It's got, it still has an adoption process for the rezoning change. The difference between it is the overlay district is an iterative process with the community to fine-tune the exact uses. There's commercial properties that the Ten Mile community wants in their community. We have to identify those, create the map. There's a, there's a whole, in the draft, there's a whole list of things from fireworks, you know, requirements to construction requirements for, there are a lot of issues that we need to work out with the community. There's a litany of things that they're requesting, yeah, that we need to make sure that we draft them properly. With the, and with the rezoning process, there's a zoning district that exists that has all the standards in it, so you just go straight to the zoning district.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
If I may say something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Darby.
I've been black for a very long time, and I asked this community years ago, I said, please don't change. Don't change this zone. I pleaded with you. I begged with you. Don't change it. But we didn't want to listen. Now, where we are, where we are now. Now we have to fight doubly now for what we told you in the past, but you didn't listen. And then if we don't fight for you, then you're considered as traitors. I know the value of the land. And again, not to preach again, but right after the Civil War, even most on education, African Americans fought for the land. We want the land, even most on education. And that's what they left us. But sometimes, education fools us. That's true. We always want what other folk have, as opposed to what our ancestors left us. We need to come home and start evaluating ourselves. I have a cornerstone in my house. This is built in honor of my father and my mother, because I know what they suffered. I ask, do not change the zone. Ms. Honeycutt is right. You need to read, you need to read and make up your mind what you want to do. Because once at this time here, I'm going to have to sit at my grandma and say, I ain't done done. I done done. I can't do anymore. So I just want to put that up for the record. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Anyone else?
Is there any sense that we have two board members that aren't here to defer the vote? I know on occasion you have, but two board members, I think, are important to this decision, and they're not here. Is there any way?
Well, we already have a motion on the floor, which we have to deal with before we could take up another motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we can always ask for the person to make the motion reconsider.
I'd like to have the vote on this motion.
So be it, sir.
For the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I would like to say that we have a second reading scheduled, which we may, we may pause the second reading. I want to make sure that, that we've looked at all these, this information. I don't know if Ms. Hamm has looked at it yet, but we will. I do want to make sure that, that the attorneys are all, have discussed this, and if there is an attorney for Ten Mile, or I think maybe they should, they should be involved, and we will, we will schedule the second reading. It may be, it is scheduled now for two weeks, right?
Yes, sir.
It may be in two weeks, or we may be able to discuss this and come back with that second reading then. So I just want to make sure that we do our homework on it. But that, that reading is scheduled for two weeks from now, but we will do our homework in the meantime. Thank you all very much. Next item?
I need to do the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, number 1202, as amended at the following document locations, Article 3.1 General, Article 3.6 Special Exceptions, Article 3.7 Site Plan Review, Article 3.10 Zoning Variances, and Article 8.1 General. There may be one more. And then we have an ordinance to amend the Charleston County Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
So I can go to four?
We can go to four.
Thank you. Number four, second reading ordinances, Andell West Plan Development Ordinance, second reading.
An ordinance rezoning the real property located at 830 Kiawah Island Parkway, parcel identification numbers 205-00-00-365, 19.23 acres, and 205-00-00-356, 31.03 acres, from the low-density residential R4 zoning district to the Andell West Commercial Plan Development, PD 185 zoning district. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with seven ayes and two absent.
Thank you. I would like to go back and ask a question about three A and B. The, the proposers of those two ordinances, did we, did we add to be, could be amended up to the third reading?
That was the original motion.
We did. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was in there. Thank you very much. Next, next item, five, third reading ordinances, financial incentives for Lidos Inc., third reading.
An ordinance authorizing the approval of Lidos Inc. as a sponsor affiliate under the fee-in-lu-of-tax agreement between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Sun Life Assurance Company of Canada, originally dated October 27, 2015, as amended and assigned, authorizing the extension of the term thereof, authorizing the issuance of certain special source revenue credits thereunder, and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Nay.
Mr. Middleton is absent. Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Ordinance passes third reading with six ayes, one nay, and two absent.
Was there no discussion on that, or like we did on the other ordinance?
On that, that third, that financial incentives, you.
I just wanted to make a brief comment that we're.
Okay, go ahead.
Financial incentives for companies, we wouldn't give any incentives to people who have lived on their land for generations. I don't see equity or justice in that.
Well, Mr. Kowalski, I would say that, that this particular item does bring in a number of jobs and investment into our community, and that's why, why, why it was in there, and that's why it got voted for. So I think, I think it was, I think it was reasonable. Number five, B, conveyance of approximately 0.09 acre vacant lot at 1153 Bexley, Bexley Street, North Charleston, third reading.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of real property totaling approximately 0.09 acres located at 1153 Bexley Street, parcel identification number 4700700248 to Crew Properties LLC. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with seven ayes and two absent.
Number six, committee recommendations of October 5, 2023, 6A Woodland Shores Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
A, B, and C?
A, B, and C, if you want. A, A, B, and C, moved by?
Honeycutt.
Ms. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Moody?
Mr. Darby.
Mr. Darby, okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Number seven, consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Sorry, Mr. Darby.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Darby and seconded by Mr. Moody. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all very much. Counsel comment, Mr. Moody?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to have a lot at some point, but I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir. Just a few remarks, or at least about one subject matter. Sometimes I have to get my.
Sometimes I have to get my thoughts together. Brain doesn't work as it used to be, or used, I guess, I should say. I have not, and seldom do I, listen to the news, local and national, because of the hard conservative right and the far liberal left, of which both sides, I think, are sick. However, Mr. Kibrowski words brought upon me a sense of great sadness because of man's inhumanity to man. It is tragically wrong, the kidnapping and killing of women and children as they're used as pawns. This world has learned nothing, nothing, when it comes to resolving national and international problems. Jesus the Man, Mahatma Gandhi, Martin Luther King Jr. are shining examples how mankind should act in resolving mankind's problems. I am not a doctrinaire pacifist, as I know there comes a time that violence must be used to stop an evil force. However, it will prove great if mankind could get beyond race, beyond class, beyond tribe, beyond religion, to resolve the common man and mankind's problems. Violence used by terrorists must be thwarted, condemned, and rooted out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kibrowski?
I thank Mr. Darby for his eloquent words that cannot speak better. I think that, I made my comments on that earlier tonight. I, when I was going to comment to the public comments, Mr. Freeman, that's what I was going to refer to, I walked those sidewalks with him, and he was correct. We almost were killed as we were walking that, just at random. So there is a need, I saw firsthand, for what he was saying. I never thought that I would, this is getting back, I'm old enough to remember the Six Day War, because I was a young teenager at the time when it was different. It was many years ago, and my grandparents, great-grandparents were alive, they had lived through things in Europe, and they came here, and it's a different America now. You see actually people demonstrating in New York, or our leading universities applauding and cheering the terrorists. I never thought I'd live to see that. But again, I want to reiterate that every Jew in America living here now would have had that same fate that you saw this weekend, had the fate had not brought him to America before the Second World War. So what happened there would have happened to us, and we wouldn't exist. So the difference, as I said, there's now an army, a Jewish army in Israel, to protect the people. And this, again, as I said, this weekend, seeing my one-year-old baby grandchildren, just to, as you feel the pain, suffering, as you hear them moan or have a disease, or vomit, and this, the thought of parents seeing their babies beheaded in front of them based on the crime of being Jewish or in their home, and seeing your wives raped in front of you, and for children to see their parents killed before their eyes, and to take grandparents as hostages, and this to think it's, as Mr. Darby said, incomprehensible that human beings can do that. But the human nature has never changed. As time goes on, and we've seen an example of that. And I know we respectively disagreed, I respect the comments of the other people tonight on the historic preservation thing, but maybe I empathize in Mr. Darby, because I know some things in life, as I saw the villages my ancestors came from, Lithuania, and while I was rushing, I walked there, and there are some remnants there. And some things in life are more important than money. It's not commoditized to have a sense of historical continuity in the face of adversity, desecration, and the blood, sweat, and tears to go in to preserve that, I think is worth preserving. And I respect the votes of the other people, but I'm sorry, we didn't prevail on that tonight. I thought something very valuable and special in Charleston history is in the process of being lost by what we voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Warman?
Nothing to say beyond what's been said. Thanks, Chairman.
Mr. Boykin?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Honeycutt?
I feel it's important to speak on this. I usually try to remain silent, but I believe it was Martin Luther King who said, "We will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." And I want to express my solidarity with our Jewish and Israeli friends. And for those of you who may not know, my grandfather was Jewish. He passed away two weeks ago. And I am, in one way, relieved that he did not live to see this. It is quite tragic, so we stand with you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Hamm? Thank you all for coming. The world is certainly a crazy place today, and I hope we get some calmness back to it. But thank you. This meeting is adjourned.